To Lake Central School Board Meeting for Monday, March 4th, 2019. If you could please join us and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make an announcement. We do have a sign up sheet in the back of the room if you'd like to make a comment during our action items or at the end of the meeting. And also tonight, they are recording our meeting. We are not doing a live stream this evening. Technical difficulties are preventing us from doing that, but they're going to record it and upload it at a future date. Moving on, I'd like to go to our agenda, approvals, deletions, and additions. Dr. Baraco.
Sure, you do have a couple revisions to the original agenda under Roman numeral five, an amendment to the date of the executive session that's highlighted at your workstation. There's also a minutes revision, but that went out earlier today.
Oh, okay.
To you electronically.
All right. Do we hear a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Ms. Seuss. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Lessenti. Any comments or questions regarding those last minute updates? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to our correspondence. Ms. Seuss.
I have no correspondence.
Okay, sorry.
Did you want to circle back?
No. Good. We move on to our ladies in committee updates. I'll start with Mr. Marshall.
Thank you. The Wesleyk Joint Managing Board Meeting for this month will be March 20th, which is two weeks from this Wednesday, here at Lake Central at four o'clock. And I have nothing to report on Personnel Interview Committee.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Lessenti?
Both of mine will be talked about at the next meeting. Sheriff over redevelopment and wellness will reconvene on March 13th, so I'll bring you back up to date then.
Thank you very much. Dr. Malco?
Lake Central Education Foundation, we're in the midst of the grant round and we're always looking for volunteers and people to join us and help our fundraising activities. So if you're interested, please let us know. And legislative, we are slotted to meet with our legislators on March 13th. That's a Friday afternoon at 1:30. Will we be meeting in here, Dr. Baraco? Is that okay, to meet in here?
Or in large conference, whichever you think is. That one might be a little more.
Comfy?
Yeah.
Okay. Large conference room then is where we'll be. Okay, that's it.
That's it, all right, thank you. Ms. Seuss?
For the redevelopment committee, I really just don't have anything, but the shops on 96 are moving right along, so you'll start to see that soon. And dollars for scholars, I believe there were 107 applications and that last year was like 77, so.
Over scholarship applications?
Yes, a lot of decisions will need to be made, so I'm not on that. Good luck.
All right, thank you very much. And then next week is the Dyer Parks Department meeting and a Dyer Redevelopment Committee meeting is next week. And if anybody's willing to volunteer, I'm not going to be around for those meetings next week, but if anybody wanted to volunteer for the Dyer, to attend the Dyer Parks.
What day is it?
I believe the Tuesday of next week is Dyer Parks. I'll check in. I think it's Tuesday and Thursday.
Thursday, I can probably make it for you. Let me know.
Okay.
Tuesday, I cannot.
I'll send out an email to the entire board as to those dates. All right, thank you. Back to our official school board business topics, our consent agenda. Dr. Baraco.
Thank you, Mr. Backs. So seek board approval for the minutes from our executive and regular meetings on February 18th, and then approval of claims, payroll, and extracurricular expenditures that you received last week.
Move to approve.
Motion from Ms. Lessenti? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Dr. Malco. Any comments or questions regarding the approval of minutes and claims and payroll and expenditures? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now, we're to our public comments regarding any of the action items this evening. Hearing no public comments, we'll move on to our official school board business topics this evening, our regular agenda. Dr. Baraco.
Thank you again. My first topic is to just update the board on a webinar I saw last week. I did send some notes to you, I see with at least one typo last week. Rob Tukusian, who's a former IU professor, who Rob may have touched base with back in the day, because he worked there for a long time, is now down at Georgia. He was commissioned, I guess, by the ISTA to look into the history of, at least the recent history of teacher compensation in Indiana. And I gave you some of the high points and, you know, I think the important thing is that in the last decade with the meager increases in, for most school districts, not just one or two, but generally several years of pay freeze somewhere in the early 2010s, it caused us to fall below our neighboring states and to drop nationally from a higher ranking to where we are now, about 34th. It's the cut and cap period from 2009 to 2011 that most people attribute to where we are. Thankfully, our cost of living is 38th, but as you know, it does vary across the state. And if you compared the cost of living in our region, it would, if our region were a state by itself, we would not be 38th. And so it's one of the things that, you know, fortunately for us, we've been able to focus on and look to use a significant portion of our upcoming increase in revenues, thanks to the taxpayer to beef that up, and we'll be bringing that back at a later date. But a couple of the stats I found interesting was to restore Indiana teacher salaries to the 2009, 2010 levels in terms of competitiveness nationally would take an additional $3.3 billion to K-12, which would be a 39 and a half percent increase. So you wouldn't think that you could fall that far behind that fast. And part of it, you know, some people would say, well, people in Indiana, based on the cost of living, were getting overpaid. Okay, that may be the argument, but still, you know, to get Indiana teacher salaries comparable to our border states would take an additional $1.4 billion or a 17.7% increase. So even if we want to look at that metric, you can see that we've fallen behind. And for sure, you know, moving into the future, our state needs to recognize this, or we're going to continue to see a brain drain, and that is the drain of good educators going to places where they get a better deal. It probably will take a while for us to get back to more competitive salaries, but at least people are talking about it now. So, and you've heard some chatter out of the state, and I'll get into a little bit more when I do my legislative update, but I did want to let the board know that, and this was through ISBA, so Terry Spradlin, you know, is a former partner of this professor from Georgia, and it was his show that he had this guest speaker on. So any questions or comments about that piece?
No. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Baraco?
Okay, so my second item is to seek board approval to head down to Indy on Friday, or Saturday morning for a rally with ISTA. See, I've got my shirt here all ready. Hoosier Sports has partnered with our teachers. If you go to the Hoosier Sports website, you'll see, you know, six or eight different versions of this shirt, stuff like it, short sleeves, hoodies, you name it. And we are going to head down and let people know that we're proud to be educators in Indiana, and we hope people support us, so.
What time are you leaving Saturday morning?
The LCTA has not told us the departure time. I would expect it to be around 9:30, since the rally's at 1:00 and we lose an hour. Probably want to get there an hour early, so I'm guessing. Maybe not, maybe nine o'clock. No, I only have Cindy so far.
Dr. Baraco, I have a very pertinent question to ask you. How does a Purdue grad feel about wearing a red shirt?
I'm okay with it. I don't own much red, so.
Okay, so I think guess we're going to need a motion on professional leave request.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Ms. Seuss, and do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Dr. Malco. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So do you have room in your vehicle?
I have room for two, I have room for two more, and I think there are going to be quite a few teacher cars heading down as well, so I don't know how many yet, but I will report back to you how many of us end up going down. It, I'm hoping we get a good turnout, because sometimes we've done events and then we don't have many people show up, and it almost would have been better off not doing it. So, you know, I know it's a Saturday and people have busy lives, but I think this is an important one.
Yeah, that's true.
And we are, and I will get you the date too from ICPE, because when we get into the heavy part of the Senate budget-making process, the Coalition is going to have another rally in the State House like we've done in the past. That's going to be, I believe it's April 16th.
Okay. Mark that down.
They set the date already for that?
I'm going to tell you, I have it in my calendar. I'm going to look it up.
Okay.
April 16th, 2:00 p.m. at the State House. That's a Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay, and then my third item is just to give the board an update on a couple of the key pieces of legislation that transferred from one side of the State House to the other. The first piece is, that I want to mention is something I mentioned in our executive session when we were talking about safety, and that's House Bill 1004. House Bill 1004 gives large corporations the right to match up to $100,000 for safety. Currently, we've been capped at $50,000, so that's something we would take advantage of, because as you know, we already spend more than $100,000 on our safety program with our SROs. And so that's, one will follow closely as it moves over to the House, or to the Senate side. That is something we would definitely like to see happen. Senate Bill 266, school mental health, and this is a piece that wants to allow us to do more for students, to help them be better equipped to learn. And so there will have to be a grant piece added to the state budget on the Senate side, or on the House side, as this thing, if it can get legs on the House side. I can't tell from the reports I've seen where the House stands on this piece, because at some point, they're going to put the brakes on anything that has a price tag attached to it. I believe on the House side, they believe the 2.1, the 2.2 that they're offering to schools is as much as they can afford in the current two-year cycle. So we'll see what happens with SB 266. Senate Bill 606, teacher salaries, this would be a welcome piece for all superintendents and teachers' unions across the state. This removes the provision that says you can only give a third of the raise attributable to experience and serving 120 years. I think I've said to this board before that Tony Bennett, former state superintendent, once said his biggest mistake was taking away the teacher salary schedule. That it, it should have been, if you can't afford it, you can't give increment and give everybody else zero, but stripping away the rights of schools when they have the money of giving an automatic raise to the people at the lowest levels of compensation was a mistake. So this piece, if it goes to the House side and goes through, it would go back to the days of us truly negotiating with our teachers' leaders and saying, okay, how do we best distribute this money without a bunch of things tying our hands? So we'll be watching that one very closely. And then the biggie, of course, is House Bill 1001, which is the budget bill, which the basics of it, the foundation that they've proposed, goes up $90 in 2020 and $107 more in 2021. So the foundation amount would go up 1.7 and 2.1% respectively. The preschool funding goes up $125 each for the next two years. The ELL budget's going to go up 2.6 million if they get their way, and remember, the House generally doesn't get everything they want. The governor doesn't get everything they want, the Senate doesn't get everything they want. They sort of have this joint committee that sits down and hashes it out. And so we'll follow that really closely. Another key piece for us that we were talking about in our admin meeting this morning is the ADM cutoff date for kindergarteners, moving from August 1st to September 1st for 2020.
Fiscal year '20, which would be.
Oh, it is, it is for 1920. Thank you, Rob. So that would be a move back to what it was before. If you remember, it used to be September 1st, and then last year, they said August 1st, if you take anybody who's an August baby, we can't give you the money for those children. So if it goes back, if this goes through, we will likely then put some type of an evaluation piece back in at our school to decide if children are ready. The other piece is this special clause that's in House Bill 1001, and this is on my sheet because it's something we're going to need to talk about at our third House session with Senator Niemeyer, because the Senate is going to get this bill, and this is something that we've been watching for years. We continue to see our General Assembly increase the amount of money they put towards the voucher system or things that qualify students for the voucher system. And I found it interesting, not that they added the maximum amount of scholarship-granting organization tax credits from 14 million to 15 million, but in the second year of the budget, it goes to 16 million or 120% of the credits in the prior fiscal year, and that piece goes in as an ongoing piece. So in essence, if people will continue to give, to write checks, to make donations to these scholarship-granting organizations, they can have an automatic 20% inflating piece for them, where everyone else's budget has to be negotiated every two years. So I think it's something we want to talk to our representative about when he sits down with us, because it just doesn't look equitable. It just doesn't look fair. So we definitely want to keep our eyes on that piece. And if you remember, when Governor Daniels put in the vouchers, he said every student must try a public school first before they can get a voucher. Then they put in this piece, but if you get a, if you get a scholarship from an SGO, then you don't have to try the public school, and in the second year, you can qualify for the voucher. So, you know, it's just a way of expanding that system, a system that some people love, but I've argued when, you know, some schools are very selective who they take and who they reject, and when they decide to dismiss somebody from their school, they shouldn't be getting much support from state dollars when we're doing a lot of the heaviest lifting in the public school system, so. And then the final piece that we're going to keep our eyes on is House Bill 1008. This is a piece from Representative Beening from Indianapolis. It's a teacher career ladder. It's $5 million. It's light on the details at this point. Looks like it's going to be some kind of competitive grant, but we're all about trying to figure out how to get a teacher ladder back in, especially if the other piece about removing the 33 and a third percent go through, we will compete for some of that money, because that's what we want. And it may not look exactly like it used to, it may not be for the first 20 years of your career, but it will definitely address that people at the lowest ends of that salary schedule need a little more to get to a livable wage, so they not only stay with Lake Central, but they stay in the profession. So that's my legislative update. I also have a piece here that I'm not going to go into, but I think you may find interesting from the Senate side. Our Senator Frank Morvan put this in his newsletter last week, and I found it an interesting read, so I'll let you look at that, just about what's happening with the State Senate in Indiana. Any questions about those pieces of legislation or our upcoming meeting on March 15th with Senator Niemeyer and others?
Yes, Senator Niemeyer and Representative Young, in that meeting?
Chris Young.
Yeah.
Did you say 13th or the 15th? 15?
15.
15.
15.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Baraco?
And there was a detailed report that ISBA sent out to us, I think last week, or it's like five pages if you print it out, but it summarizes a lot of the updates and the important bills that are out there, so it might be a good idea to review that before our meetings with them.
Good idea. Very good. Yeah. All right, thank you, Dr. Baraco. All right, moving on to our Director of Human Resources, Teri Meecher.
Thank you very much. We're recommending that the following classified and certified appointments and so forth are recommended, but I do want to draw particular attention to retirement. Cheryl Johnson, for 18 years of service as a nurse at Watson Elementary.
Wow, that's great.
Very nice.
All right.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for Ms. Lessenti?
Second.
We have a second from Dr. Malco. Any comments or questions regarding those personnel recommendations? All right, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. My second item is about substitute bus drivers and our continued effort to get more bus drivers into the Lake Central system. We passed by, Dr. Baraco passed by Christian, the idea of perhaps drawing them in by getting our substitute bus drivers a raise from $17 to $19 per hour and putting it on a nice big banner outside, and hopefully we can get some more people.
That would be, that would be great, if we could get some bus drivers, yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, and send them to come over to us.
It will drive out everything.
Great. All right, we need a motion on that as well.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Marshall. We have a second from Dr. Malco. Any comments or questions regarding those, that increase?
It's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea. All right. Let's take a poll, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Teri. Moving on to our Director of Primary Education, Teresa Shum.
Thank you. My first item is to seek your approval of professional leave requests that were included in your packet.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Ms. Seuss, and I'll go ahead and second that motion. Any comments or questions regarding those professional leave requests? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. My second item is to seek your approval of the field trip requests that were also included in your packet.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Dr. Malco, second from Mr. Marshall. Any comments or questions regarding the, I think it's a single field trip request this time, right?
Um.
I think we have one? That's it, one field trip, yeah, field trip request. Okay. Not hearing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And my third item is just to share an exciting project that we have going on. So I've asked Elena, our Director of Libraries, to join us tonight, and while she's getting set up, because it appears that the computer had to do several updates before she could sign on, I thought I'd just share a little bit of information. This project kind of took flight when Elena and I had a conversation during the Donalyn Miller, the Book Whisperer workshop, and as we were talking, we found out that we both had fond childhood memories of the bookmobile, and that it was a dream that we shared that we would have a bookmobile here in Lake Central. So we went to Mr. James with our dream, and after some discussion with him, found that having a repurposed bus really wasn't an option for us. So Elena didn't quit, she didn't give up, she just kept at it, trying to figure out how she could make this happen. And so that's what she's going to share tonight, what she has been working on and the ideas that she has come up with. So she's got a little PowerPoint to share with you. If you give her a few minutes, she will be ready to roll.
It's going to take me a minute here to get in.
Sarah, how many were there? 35,000 updates before it would?
I might have my screen moved down for a second.
Okay. Okay. Um, thank you, Teresa. So like Teresa mentioned, she and I kind of hatched this idea as a result of the Donalyn Miller presentation in August. Donalyn is just an amazing advocate for literacy and just a wonderful person all around. And she spoke on the topic of building a community of readers, and one of the things that she really spoke at length about was this idea of book access for kids. Our students are so lucky that they, they go to schools and they have a full-time librarian and they have a fully-staffed library. So throughout the school year, every day, they have access to books, whatever they need. So things get a little dicier in the summer months, because our public libraries, our local libraries are wonderful, but they're a little hard to get to, particularly if you are on foot or on a bicycle. So the uni for us, yeah, just a second. The uni for us would be a mobile library. It would be an 11th library location for us, and it would be completely mobile. It would be fully functioning lending library. And we think that by creating this mobile library, we will be able to increase book access for kids, and that's really the goal of the project. So what would our uni look like? Our version of the uni would consist of two mini carts. These are an architect's design, they're fabricated in New York specifically for the purpose of programming in public spaces. They're all hardwood. You can't see from these pictures, but they have wheels and caster wheels with brakes. They weigh about 200 pounds empty, and each cart would provide 100, about 180 linear inches of shelf space for books. So we would have the two mini carts, and then we are looking to purchase 10 of the uni benches, and then also, we would like to build a collection specifically for the uni, and that would be in the range of 300 to 400 books as a startup collection. And I can only fit one book on there. So the thing that makes this mobile is, that is the food service truck zooming across the slide. We can fit all of the components of the uni inside of that food service truck, and the lift on the truck makes us mobile and able to set up wherever we decide to go. So where do we decide to go? A typical deployment of the uni would consist of two librarians, likely myself and either one of the elementary or middle school librarians driving the truck, and we would keep our hours consistent. One deployment would be three hours, probably about 9:00 to noon before the kids are ready to go to the pool. And we are tentatively looking at a Tuesday, Thursday summer schedule. We would rotate between Dyer, Hurville, and St. John, locations that we've kind of talked about, and Teresa talked about this too. She had a really good idea of trying to do some outreach at the apartment complexes, maybe in their community. is the food service truck zooming across the slide. We can fit all of the components of the uni inside of that food service truck. And the lift on the truck makes us mobile and able to set up wherever we decide to go. So where do we decide to go? A typical deployment of the uni would consist of two librarians, likely myself and either one of the elementary or middle school librarians driving the truck. And we would keep our hours consistent. One deployment would be three hours, probably about nine to noon before the kids are ready to go to the pool. And we are tentatively looking at a Tuesday, Thursday summer schedule. We would rotate between Dyer, Hurville, and St. John, locations that we've kind of talked about, and Teresa talked about this too. She had a really good idea of trying to do some outreach at the apartment complexes, maybe in their community rooms setting up, as well as parks. We've talked a lot about Reader Park, which is just a beautiful location, which would be perfect for this. So that's kind of what we're looking at for this summer. So in addition to books and reading, we would also be capable of providing special programming, and Teresa can attest to this too. When you talk to a teacher in the district about this project, they are so excited. They want to be a part of it, they want it to be successful. We've had offers, Trish Geis, Kim Yalich, they've both volunteered to do read-a-labs and storytelling. Mr. Delauter has offered to perform. And then also Melissa Miller, who's a Watson art teacher, she offered to do an art program. So I think this could have a lot of impact in the community, and I think that a lot of people in the district are behind it. Once we get those components in place, we could also expand, you know, beyond literacy. There's a uni build program where you provide the kids with Legos and Duplo blocks and magnet tiles and, you know, imagination playground pieces, and they can build and be creative. There's also a uni draw program, which is obviously more of an art-based program. So how much does all this fund cost? So the two mini carts, as you can see, are 62.75 a piece. The 10 benches are 285 a piece, the 320 books, approximately $20 each, brings us to a total startup cost of 21.8. We do have some funds committed. The James P. Watson Memorial Fund, they are excited about the project, and they've committed to a $5,000 donation towards that. And then also the Lake Central Library, our general fund allocation, we will commit to purchasing the books for the startup collection to 2,6400. And then we also have a local business donation of 1,000, which gets us to 12,400, which is better than halfway. I am going to meet with LCEF a week from tonight and talk there about the program and see what their involvement could possibly be. And we also have a school store fundraiser that is ready to go live after tonight. So, yes?
First of all, excellent presentation. It was absolutely beautiful. Second of all, what about the PTOs? Are they willing to help out at all, since we have all the elementary schools?
We have to tap that, but that's obviously...
I'm just wondering if that might be a great resource for us. They're always looking for things to do for our schools with all the elementaries.
Thank you. Yeah.
Now, what you, how are you going to advertise this to the public and get that out there that they know that you're going to be in Dyer, you're going to be in Hurville, you're going to be in St. John on these certain days? How are you going to, so the kids will come out and they're aware that you're there?
Ideally, we would get this ordered by April. It's an eight-week fabrication, so that would get it to us before school ends. So as an initial promotion, we would like to take it to each of the elementary schools while school's still in session, set it up, let the kids see it, let them get excited about it, and then issue each student, you know, a personal invitation, you know, some kind of card that tells them where it's going to be all summer, where it's going to be, when it's going to be there. If they show up with the card, you know, we can give them a popsicle or some, you know, something to draw the kids there. In addition to that, we will have social media presence. I've reached out to some of the technology trainers, and we will have an Instagram and a Twitter to help keep, you know, people know what the kind of world will be.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, getting it out there like that, that's awesome.
You made me think with the card, everyone always likes to win stuff too. Maybe do a punch each time they come out and then put them in a raffle or something like that to get people out there. We always know they like to win something.
Free dilly bar, if they're five punches.
Right, even if it's a popsicle, I was going to say.
Yeah, popsicle, free dilly bar, five punches.
Right, there's some businesses that might, you know, culvers or...
Where will you store this in the off-season? So in the high school library, I have a storage room behind. But we also, you know, depending on need and situation that arises, we could even, you know, pull it out during the school year. The initial focus is to try to really help with summer reading, but it could be used during the school year as well.
That's a great idea. So when do you anticipate starting it?
The summer. So like I said, we, ideally, we would be able to place our order in April. It's an eight-week fabrication. We would get it by the end of the school year, be able to ship it to all the kids.
Then I mean, would you, would you start the availability of the program like in June or more like in July or more like in August?
Probably a week off after that last week of school, and then start right into Tuesdays, Thursdays, take the week off for the Fourth of July week, again, right back to it.
So you would still have it going on in August as a jumpstart kind of preparation?
Yes. Yeah.
The exposure is so important to those children, and to have it come to them is a great idea.
Yeah, that is a close...
So who's going to drive the food truck?
Uh, probably me.
You couldn't get us a bus?
That's cute.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elena.
Thank you, Elena.
Feel free to leave. I know it's your bedtime. And for my last item, it is also Sarah's first item, so we thought we would put those together, is to share with you the details of the elementary summer school for summer 2019. I did give you a handout that is at your workstation for elementary summer school. The dates will be June 10th to June 28th, time 8:00 to 10:30. That is Monday through Friday. We will hold it at Piper. Subjects will be reading and math, and students will attend both reading and math. We are targeting grades one through four, and students will be invited by their teacher, and that will be determined through the RTI process, the students that are in need. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'm just curious. I know we always do summer school in June. I'm just wondering if it's always like that, but have we ever thought of doing it in July and August, so that it's a prep for the school year, or is it because of vacations?
Two, two or three years ago, we did do a end of July just before, and it was not well-attended at all.
That's what I figured.
And I thought for sure we would just get loads of kids, but...
No good.
No.
Okay. Thank you. I know most of them run in June. I was just curious if, since we're trying, you know what I mean, to spread that out?
It is a great idea. I've had a great idea, but no one else did.
I thought it was a good idea.
All right. Is that, is that it, Teresa?
That is it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our Director of Secondary Education, Sarah Castaneda.
Thank you. For my first item, I'm going to follow up where Teresa left off and talk about our middle school summer school program. Our dates are going to be June 10th through June 27th. We're going to attempt to run on the same Monday through Thursday schedule that the high school is piloting this year. I mentioned last year when we did summer school that we had close to 20% of our students with former absences, just trying to run three full five-day weeks. And so perhaps having that weekend time, because we saw a lot of attendance issues on Fridays, might give us better attendance rates during the summer. So our timeframe would be 8:45 to 10:45. That's a half hour more than we had last year to make up the difference for the date lost. Our location is going to be Kaler Middle School this year. The first year that at least I was here and we did middle school summer school, it was at Clark. The past couple of years, it's been at Grummer, because it is most centrally located, but Grummer is going to get a roof repair this summer. That's going to be pretty extensive, so Kaler is where we're going to locate it this year. The subjects are going to be English, language, arts, or math. Students will only attend one subject area. We found that in years past, when we tried to have them attend for both, it was, again, kind of attendance issues and trouble having students meet during both session times, so we're just going to focus on one area. The grades will be fifth, sixth, and seventh. That's excluding eighth grade, because our current eighth graders are much more interested in PE and pool for the summer for high school. And then students will be identified, same as we did last year, based on course grades, already scores, in addition to our current students within the RTI program. Any questions?
I'm sorry. And where does the camp invention come in here? When will it be held and where?
That is held independent of us, but I do know that it is at Kohling this year, just because they do the building use requests. I don't remember the date. It is in June.
Okay. Okay. And that information is sent out to all students and then whoever can't afford it?
On camp invention, no. Because they are independent, we do not advertise for them.
So they take care of it? They...
They take care of everything.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. For my second item, I am seeking your approval for the professional leave requests as presented.
Move to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Marshall. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mrs. Seuss. Any comments or questions regarding those professional leave requests? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And for my last item, I am seeking your approval for the field trip requests as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion for Mr. Marshall. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Lessanti. Okay. Any comments or questions on our field trip requests? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our Director of Special Education, Becky Ukravala.
My first item is to seek your approval for the professional leave requests that were included in your packets.
So moved.
There's a motion from Dr. Malkow, and I will second that. Any comments or questions regarding those professional leave requests? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And my second item is to just provide more information on our new accountability system for special education, and I included some bullet points in your packet, but I was able, the Department of Ed is holding regional meetings to discuss the data in the new accountability system, which I attended on February 19th. So just a couple of my takeaways from that. There are some private schools in the state who provide special education services. They are not included in this accountability system.
Why?
Do you know why? Similar to general education, they're not held to the same standards as we are in public ed.
I just wondered.
So they were excluded from the analysis, but charter schools were not. So this is still a problem because charter schools, charter schools do not serve the wide range of students that we do in public schools. While they are supposed to take all students, they don't typically serve students with more significant disabilities, and those students do factor into several of the accountability areas. So it is sort of an apples and oranges comparison in some respects. The current system, where we're compared to schools across the state, creates an issue because it doesn't reference our own local growth, so it doesn't reference changes that we make within Lake Central School Corporation. It's going to be comparing us to other schools throughout the state. So with, if the idea is all the schools are showing improvements, then we may not see change in our individual scores because the target is going to continue to move for us. If you remember, we were given a rating of one through five in all the areas, so they divided us into quintiles. That was done even when the distribution of data was incredibly small. So if you remember, the ISTAR KR, which is our preschool assessment, that was one of the areas I was kind of upset about because we had a score of one. Well, the, there's only a difference of about 10% from our score of one to a score of five. So they kind of created these artificial divisions even when there's not really a significant scatter or distribution in the scores. So, you know, included in your notes, we had 73% of our students show growth, and we were given a score of one. Schools earning a three had 75% of their students showing growth, and those earning a five showed approximately 85% of their students with growth. So it is kind of a, it's a forced comparison when really those schools aren't comparing significantly better than us, but when you're given a ranking of one to five, their score is much higher than ours. One thing we did learn about ISTAR KR is students who were dismissed from services, meaning they no longer needed special education, were not counted in our data. So that's a problem for us, because if they were dismissed from services, they were probably showing significant growth. So the advice from the Department of Ed is to complete that assessment before you dismiss them and indicate their disability area. So, you know, that's kind of playing a game with the data. But if that's the game they want us to play, we'll play it. One other thing that was interesting is some of the areas we talked about, the state has goals for us. So one of them is least restrictive environment. So the state wants us to have 71% of our students with IEP spending 80% of their day in general ed. Well, even if you met that target, you still didn't receive a five, which is strange to me. So you, schools who exceeded the state goal for that still received a ranking of three, because they're still, they're forcing us into this division. And again, charter schools who have the majority of their students in general ed, because they don't provide the amount of services we do, have much higher LRE percentages. So there's a lot of problems with the system. You know, the staff from the DOE listened to what we had to say. It was all special ed directors and some district administrators, other general ed administrators there. They said that the goal of the system is not punitive, that it really is designed just to get us reflecting on our own data. The response from those of us in the field is anytime you're giving schools a score of one to five, if you're a school who has a one, it does sort of become punitive, and it will call into question the services you're providing when that information becomes public. So they acknowledged their issues. They are open to looking at different ways to do this. This results-driven accountability is part of ESSA, and the state is required to design some sort of system for this. So this was the first year, this is their first go at it. I would expect we'll see some changes in the future. And for now, I mean, it has given us some good information. It has caused us to reflect on what we're doing, but there are definitely some problems with it. So we will keep working hard to create good outcomes for students, and we'll use this as one piece of information, but it's certainly not reflective of the overall quality of our services, I don't believe.
So is this the meeting that you had referenced that you were going to have and be able to ask those questions?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So it sounds like it was rather productive then?
It was. It was. It, you know, some of it is a little, I think, like anything, you feel a little bit defeated at the end because it's, it's a constant moving target, and again, with the idea that we're being compared to schools that are distinctly different from us is a little, a little frustrating.
Did they have anything to say about the public, or the private schools not participating? Did they know anything about why that was?
Well, because they're really not required or held to the same accountability standards. So there are schools that can choose to become choice. They can take the voucher and provide special education services for students, and then they receive state funding for those special education services. However, they don't have to follow the same requirements of Article VII that we do. They create choice school plans, not IEPs. The parents don't have the same due process rights as they do in public schools. It's, it's very interesting that they are held to a lower standard and still receive the same funding that we do.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's crazy. That's something to talk about on March 15th.
Yeah. Any other questions for Becky?
I just have one more question if I could. I know that with my list of questions I sent in today, you had mentioned the IEP Resource Center.
Yes.
Could you tell me more about that?
Sure. So the state has, I believe there are 13 resource centers. They're part of the state resource network. So it used to be, this is my understanding, it was before my time, every special ed cooperative or district would receive a certain amount of dollars for professional development every year, and that was allocated by the state. The state stopped doing that, giving the money directly to the districts, and instead holds that money and funds these different resource networks. So the Indiana IEP Resource Center is one of them. They provide a lot of professional development and support on inclusive strategies. They work with us on our Indiana IEP, our online program, and, you know, we'll do local trainings on behavior. So a lot of their one-day local trainings are free, but when they do their larger conferences, there is a fee for that. But it's, you know, for that particular conference you referenced, it's $250 per person, but it's a two-day conference with a lot of very well- it's a two-day conference with a lot of very well-respected national presenters. So it's still a bargain as far as they're concerned.
So when you say you have local professional learning opportunities, or is it like Northwest Indiana?
Mm-hmm. They'll travel, they have certain things, like we, they did a co-teaching, a one-day co-teaching training in the fall that there was no charge for, and it was in Maryville. So we had almost 20 teachers attend that one. They'll do them on behavior planning, the IEP program, writing effective goals, things like that. So they do try to space them out around the state, and usually we have a couple dates here right in Maryville.
Are we assigned a certain facilitator, or does it just vary?
They have employees who work directly for them, and that's who will conduct their local trainings.
It's not always the same facilitator for us?
Um, no. It's, I mean, they have a core group probably of about seven to 10 people, so it's usually the, one of the familiar faces who will do that.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Thank you, Becky. Anything else?
No.
All right. Moving on to our Director of Technology, Rick Moreno.
Yes. Dr. Veracca and I attended a cybersecurity seminar. We were told when we first got there that in 2000, since 2016, K-12 districts experienced about two cyber attacks per week, and that number is expected to double this year. I mean, it's how, it's going around so much, and it's, to me, that's scary because this is, you know, it's what we do. And the idea that people are trying to hack into our network, it just amazed me. Although we've worked very hard to prevent these cyber attacks, when I heard how many schools just attending the seminar had already been attacked, I was very surprised. It's no longer an isolated incident that happens just in school districts in other states, but here in Indiana and all the states really now. They pointed out the importance of having these devices in place to monitor suspicious activities on the network. And we already put something like that in place last summer, and it's working out very well for us. We actually caught a few hackers from other countries trying to break into our network over the past few months, mainly from other countries, Russia, China, just other countries throughout. So that monitor has really helped a lot. They also mentioned making sure that we update all of our operating systems and devices that we have on the network. Not only computer systems, but they've also suggested that we block or update systems for our HVAC, the, any kind of monitors that are connected to Wi-Fi or like our flap panels.
Oh, yeah.
You know, equipment like that, which even at home we all have.
Printers.
Yeah, especially everything. They said that was one of the ways that they're, which, that they're trying to hack now, and that's actually how they were trying to hack us, through an HVAC system.
Wow.
Which is, you know, it has an IP to it. It's not really even a computer. It was just, it's a dumb terminal, but it is connected to the internet, so they were able to try to hack through it. It was just amazing when you, it was, it really was. I think Dr. Veracca and I would just, every once in a while, would just look at each other like, you know, it's just amazing.
Yeah.
They stressed the importance of security audits, which we have done one a few years ago. They suggested that we do one every two years, and that's what the plan is. I'd like to do one soon. We'd probably do one closer to the summer when there's no one around, and then do one every two years like they suggested. All in all, it was a very good seminar. I was really glad I went, although we were doing most of what they suggested, just to hear, and like I said, they kind of went around the room and, you know, asked around it, you know, who's been attacked, who hasn't, and things like that. And it really is scary. It really is scary to see how many people are getting hacked and already were hacked. I was very surprised.
Anybody have any questions?
I would just add that the most successful thing that they uncovered were actually emails to staff members in the business department posing as the superintendent or posing as the staff attorney or an accountant who consults with the school corporation. And so they copy the letterhead and they copy all this other stuff, the symbols, and, but then if you look at the top, if you don't pay attention to who the actual thing originated from.
The address, you mean?
The email addresses some way out. But if you're in a hurry, as people can be, they extract data from the employee with a pretty simple scam. But that, that simple, what looks simple in people's haste, they give away information, so.
And that's what they call.
They try to do that to us, too, so.
That's what they call phishing, and that's where 90% of the time, that's how they get into your network, through phishing.
Through phishing, yeah.
And so one of the things that we've talked about was beginning of next school year, having some extra training there for the teachers, sending out emails throughout the year, just reminding people, don't click on this, don't click on that. Maybe a few little articles here and there, just to kind of remind them of what's going on out there and how dangerous it is to click on something.
Does anybody have any questions for?
Well, the appropriate way to react to these phishing expeditions is what, just delete.
Delete. I do, yes. And what I've done, because I've had people send me an email, like, click here for this, I'll call them. Did you, did you send me this, or did you not send me? I always make sure, but that really is the only way anywhere. You just can't trust what people send you.
Yeah.
You just can't.
So I'm curious, when you say a security audit, did you say or update?
They call it a security audit, and what they do is they, you pay a company, you know, just a computer company out there, that they try to see any vulnerabilities on our network. You know, they'll try to get in from the outside, they'll come in, sit down with us. You know, we let them look at how we have things set up, and they give us suggestions or tell us, hey, don't do this, don't do that. This is not a good idea. It just gives you a second opinion. You might think you've got it all set the way it is, but, you know, you might not think of something, and so.
How long?
It helped the last time.
How long would a vulnerability assessment like that take?
The last time, I think it took about a half of a day. It wasn't very long.
Wasn't that long?
No, no. And that's what they do. So I think they already know what to look for, things to try, and what the more common mistakes are. When I worked at companies before, I think that we had a better view of things because when I, the customers we had, they focused on their network, the way it's set up. That's all they know. We looked at it from a different perspective. We dealt with hundreds of customers, so we saw hundreds of problems, and we kind of expected.
Oh, okay.
It helps to have that.
Rick, in the corporate atmosphere I work in, when phishing attempts come up, it's always recommended, you know, to delete and then change your password.
Password, yes. We always recommend that. Whenever someone calls me, that's exactly what I tell them. I said, the first thing I would do is change that password. And the problem is that sometimes people use that same password for their bank.
Of course.
Or other things, and that's what's scary. So if you get that, you know.
What are our plans? You were saying that they plan threats will probably double. What are our plans to fight off those threats, then?
Just, the things that I mentioned, and there are some that I would be happy to mention when everyone else isn't listening because they say with a network, the less you tell people, the more secure you'll be.
Sure.
Because as soon as they hear what you're doing.
Our sex session.
They'll try to get in that way, or try to find the weaknesses with it.
Rick is going to be doing some, he's going to do a presentation on that first day. I think I told the board, like, we're going to back off of some of the heavy dose of financial stuff. We're going to do a lot more professional development on our first teacher day next year, and one of the breakout sessions will be Rick talking about these things. And then we do intend to spot test our staff over the year to see if we can lure them into clicking on stuff. And if we test ourselves, we think we can train people to, don't just out of curiosity be clicking on stuff.
That's a good idea.
And there are companies that actually do this, and, you know, they're not very expensive, and they'll send out so many emails to different people every week, every month, and they keep, there's a report that we can see. And some of the schools that have actually done this, they might have started off with 35, 40% of the people clicking on them.
Oh, yeah.
And by the time they're done, they're down to maybe 1%, 2%, which is great.
They've just got to ingrain it into them, do not click on that.
That's what happens.
Yeah.
Rick, I don't want to prolong this discussion unnecessarily, but what do you feel about two-step authentications?
We do plan on putting, in fact, we have everything ready to go. We just thought that we might wait till the end of the school year so we won't cause so much confusion.
Sometimes it's a pain to get, you know, code back to your cell phone.
That's exactly why we studied, is getting that back to your cell phone. There are spots, unfortunately, in the high school that you can't get a signal.
You can't get a signal.
Right. But you could download codes and keep them on your phone in case you ever need them or something. So you can get around that, but we just didn't want to cause all the confusion.
Sure.
In the middle of the year. But we have everything set, ready to go. In fact, it's turned on, so any one of us who have an email just can just turn it on now. You can just turn on within your email. We just haven't announced it yet.
Something of the future, then?
Yes.
Well, most of our banks are making us do it already, so.
Yeah.
So I think in the litany of emails we went back and forth with about this situation at one of the elementary schools, you had mentioned that we have the Cisco as the firewall protection, and that's one of the best out there.
It really is, yeah.
Okay. I was surprised to read that. I didn't know that, that Cisco was top of the line.
And just like I mentioned in that email, that's the reason why we chose, it was not the cheapest by any means, but it really was one of the most reliable and one of the most respected companies out there, I'm sure.
Yeah, I get a taste of that.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of corporations out there use Cisco.
Okay. So that's good to know that we have the best out there.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Moving on to our Director of Business Services, Rob James.
Thank you, Mr. Paxo. I just have one item this evening, and I just seek your approval for the donations that were documented in your report pack.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any comments or questions regarding those donations? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. I was expecting more.
Sorry, just more.
Thank you very much. All right. We're moving on to our public comments section of this evening, and we do have two people signed up. First is Kate Pershan. Did I say that correctly? Okay. If you'd like to step up here, we have a podium, and then if you could give us your, if you could give us your address, and then you can proceed.
Hi, I'm Kate Pershan. I live in 8634 Piper Street in St. John. I'm a parent of two students at Clark, and I came today to just talk about my concern right now with the busing situation. My boys both ride bus 78 in the morning and after school, and recently I know that there's been a shortage of bus drivers. I spoke with someone at the Transportation Department, and I know that this is a concern around the school district, and it's been, you know, something that's been considered. I just wanted to kind of throw out our personal impact it's having on our street and on our children. My boys put themselves in the bus in the morning. They are 11 and 13 years old, and I leave for work at 6:30, so I'm not able to be with them when they get on the bus. So some mornings they are alone, some mornings they have a sitter, and the mornings that they are alone, it's very difficult if we don't know what time the bus is coming. So I consider that a safety issue. My 13-year-old has a cell phone, so he's able to text me and let me know that they've gotten on the bus safely, but especially with the cold weather, sometimes they're standing outside for a long period of time if the bus is going to be late. Sometimes we get that call about the late bus after I've left for work, so I'm at work then leaving. I'm a teacher as well, so I leave my classroom to call and make sure that they understand what's going to happen. This morning, we got a phone call, the bus was going to be 20 minutes late, and it wasn't. So thankfully, my neighbor had offered to take a group of kids to school, but if she hadn't, they would have all missed the bus because it did come on time today. So it was very confusing. After school, of course, is a little different. It's inconvenient for our family just because we, you know, the boys have activities and things after school, but outside of that even, sometimes they're getting home and, again, it's actually a half hour on the bus, and they, from what they had to tell me, it's sometimes three kids in the seat, which I know is acceptable, but it's a little crowded when they're middle schoolers and they're a little larger. So I know on our street, too, we have elementary students as well. We have a, you know, a big congregation of kids, and it's just, it's been difficult. So I just wanted to see how the school board is handling that right now and what some plans are maybe to move forward and help alleviate the situation, which I know is a problem around the district.
Well, as you can see, we did pass that motion tonight, and hopefully that'll draw upon, you know, some more of our substitute bus drivers out there. You know, we can lure some away from maybe other districts and can help us out, but maybe Dr. Veracca can address that as well.
We did give the drivers a raise that was larger than teachers or administrators this past time because we believe in the laws of supply and demand, and we think if we can get the hourly rate up, we can attract more people to it. The economy's pretty good. Lake Central's not the only school district that is struggling mightily to find people to do the job. It's not an easy job. It's a stressful job. The hours aren't great. You work three hours in the morning, take a four-hour break, and work three hours again. So it takes the right kind of person who is willing to get up that early to do the work, and then to have the patience to deal with young kids who, especially after school, can be excited to be done with the school day, and so.
That's a nice way to put it.
It doesn't always, it doesn't always, it doesn't always appeal to a high percentage of the population, but we will continue to try to use the law of supply and demand to increase the pool. I will tell you, it's been difficult. We're behind on repairs because our mechanics have been driving every day.
Yeah, that's what they're telling me.
So, you know, we're sort of pulling out all the stops right now, and we're still short, and that's why you see certain neighborhoods have to be picked up by a different bus because we don't have enough drivers to run all the routes. I was down visiting with the Transportation Department last Tuesday to talk about giving subs, because I want to explain to the other drivers in their first year why we're paying somebody who doesn't have a regular route the same amount, and it's because we really need them to show up every day, too. We need every single sub we can get. And so, but I wanted them to hear it from us. And then, you know, we listened to some ideas of how we can improve attendance. Overall, we have a record number of drivers on family medical leave because they've had serious illnesses, and it's in the double digits, and we've never experienced that many before. So we've sort of been hit by a lot of things, and I do think our problem is probably worse than some other area districts, but we probably need to do a better job of spreading the word. I think our hourly rate is near the top.
Yeah.
In Lake County now.
Yeah, that's good.
So, but still and all, when you have to be at work, when you've got to get up at 5:00 to be at work by quarter to 6:00 to start that bus route, people tend to want to live pretty close to have those hours and then that four-hour break in the middle of the day. So we'll do what we can to try to get the word out, and I think if we can make the deal a little better, we can take the pressure off over time.
Are our bus drivers offered any type of benefits? I know they get some sick days or anything like that, but it's not a full-time job, right? So they don't.
It's not. They get sick days and some personal days.
I know that the transportation, you had mentioned that there are a lot of.
We really don't want them taking sick or personal days, though, it just compounds the problem.
Yeah.
Our goal is to get their rate as high as it can be so that we can fill the pipeline with more interested parties.
And Kate, knowing what you heard here today, you being a teacher. And Kate, knowing what you heard here today, you being a teacher.
Yes.
Spread the news wide and far, you know, that we're looking for substitute.
Scrum point's not the same problem. But, you know, and another thing I didn't mention, too, and I, again, I know your work, and I appreciate your time, but, you know, the boys are missing their first half hour of school, too, so that's tricky. One of my kids is a real good student and able to keep up the other one, that half hour is.
Makes a difference.
Difficult for him, yeah.
Makes a big difference.
So the communication that comes to you, the phone calls, if the bus is going to be running late, is that like a robo-call that comes, or is each?
It's, yeah, it's the Transportation Director who calls, and it is an automated call. It is timely. I mean, they do get it, well, before the bus comes in the morning, and well before the bus is, like, 11, 12 o'clock in the afternoon typically is when we know about the afternoon bus route, and Tom Ebelton makes arrangements.
So that does help?
Yeah, it does help. I mean, they're, they're consistent about it, and every single day that there's, you know, and it comes by email and text, depending on how the parents have it set up.
Okay. How are these routes chosen? Which ones are late, Larry? Or Dr. Varco, sorry?
Well, it's based on geography, which, which current route has space on their bus and can pick up an adjacent neighborhood that's still going to the same school, so I don't know the exact science that Christian is using. I know that there have been some days where he has really been stressed out, though, because he had to combine so many routes.
Yeah, I've heard from quite a few of the bus drivers as well.
It has to do with the size of the, the number of students already on the bus, and which buses can be combined, and then some buses that can be split, so that some students from one bus can go on this bus, and some students, and that becomes complicated.
So that's something we should probably look into, then, so that when this is happening in the future, we do have some sort of a plan. I don't want it to happen in the future, but that we have some sort of a plan. I'm just wondering if, like, buses that run routes closer to the schools, can they be used on the farther routes first and then get those kids last? I don't know if that would get them there any sooner or?
Transportation also mentioned, too, that we're one of the only school districts that offer busing to every student, and so because of that, there's, you know, higher demand for number of bus drivers.
Right.
True.
I understand all that, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right, our second person that signed up is, is it Eva or Ava?
Eva.
Eva?
Yes.
Laform?
Yes.
Anyway, I'm here before, I live at 8602 Tapper Down Street from Kate, so I'm not going to repeat everything that Kate did, but I just, again, wanted to voice my concern as an educator myself as well. I leave for school early in the morning. I work in Illinois, so I do have a sitter that comes to our house as well. But since last Tuesday, we've had eight robo-calls about the bus. And last Thursday, my biggest concern was my, I have one student at Coleen and one at Clark. My Coleen student normally gets picked up at 7:18, and she got picked up at 8:01, at 16 degrees outside. Thankfully, our sitter has a vehicle, you know, and my son calls me. I was already in class, my phone rings, I'm like, oh my, what's going on? So he's like, the bus hasn't come yet for Dana, and I was like, oh my goodness. So then it was trying to figure out how we're going to get her to school. The sitter was supposed to take David, my sixth grader, and another neighbor to tutoring. They missed tutoring because they were waiting for the sitter. So it's just like Kate has said, it's a, you know, a spiral effect. It's not only that, it's affecting the school, it's affecting the families, it's affecting my sitter, went to work late twice already because buses were late, which is not acceptable to me, does that paying her, and now she's going to her job late when she leaves my house normally at 8:19, I think the bus comes. So normally she can get to her nine o'clock job.
Yep.
And she's running late because the buses are running late. Also, it's affecting us after school. We have, I left work two hours early to get my son to go for 30 doctor's appointment because we got the robo-call at 11 o'clock that the bus wasn't going either. He gets off the bus, when he takes the bus home and it's running late, he gets off the bus around 3:45, or I'm sorry, not 3:40, 4:45. They get out at 3:40. So they're on the bus for almost an hour. And I know my street, our street is the last street in the Coleen, Erden, and Clark district. So like, we are one of the farther away. I would stay in St. John, so I think it's just a big concern, and we just wanted to voice our opinions. That's why we vote.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eva.
We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Well, I have an idea.
Yes, ma'am.
She and I don't like it, so.
You want, okay.
I just have an idea what we could do temporarily, and that would be to?
Thank you, Eva, and thank you, Kate. All right, moving on to our board comments and consideration of future agenda items. Start with Ms. Lessenbeath.
We're, sorry, I was.
We're doing board comments and consideration of future agenda.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the Watson PTO and Charity Leida and our State Representative, Chris Chung, for coming out on Friday night to Watson to tell us what was going on and things like that. To hear that Lake Central loses $1.4 million to a virtual school just is unbelievable to me, and I think we really need to start talking to people in, that are representing us and saying, why are we giving $1.4 million of our money away when a virtual school can be done through public schools? I'm not really sure about that, but I'm very grateful for all of them for bringing that up. Larry, I don't, and District, I don't know if you guys know the name of it, what's the play, the spelling bee, something, something spelling bee coming up?
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about? Okay, the, the high school has a phenomenal play coming up, and I cannot remember the first part of the Something Great Spelling Bee, but please come out and see it, it's going to be phenomenal.
The Cudinum County Spelling Bee?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, yes. That's coming up, and look forward to that. And thank you to all of our teachers, paraprofessionals, food service, transportation, administration, all of you for doing all you do. We greatly appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Malkow?
I guess I would love to see our summer school expanded, and I know I say this every year, and I know you're going to tell me there's no funding for it, but I am happy to hear that there are some options that we can share with our students, like the dream box for the summer, and then the reading, just to keep that learning going, because there's so much loss that occurs during the summer. Very happy to see our gymnastics team is moving forward, and I believe that we have state competition for Science Olympiad coming up soon, too. And I don't know, Mrs. Nowacki, if I could put you on the spot, what's going on with the dance team? Are they?
State of the game.
Is that the one in Lafayette?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. So they'll be competing also. So just a lot of neat things going on. Oh, I happened to read in, I think it was the Kayler Newsletter, some of these students that are like eighth graders that are, went to Group One in music, and they received a first. Now, to go in a Group One solo at eighth grade is phenomenal, and then to go down there and get a gold on top of it. So I'm hoping that those students will come before us to be honored, because that's quite a, quite an honor to achieve that at a seventh and eighth grade. That's phenomenal. So, no, that's it, nothing else. Thank you, though.
All right, thank you, Dr. Malkow. Mr. Marshall?
Yes, Dr. Malkow mentioned one of the thoughts I had. As a former social studies teacher, I'd like to give you a little bit of a history lesson. Lake Central under the regime of Dr. Emrick, Janet Emrick, was first approached at that time to incorporate a female gymnastics team. Well, she had some major concerns, like the liability issue and facilities. We didn't have the facilities we have now. But one of her principals, Sandy Platt, in the high school intervened at that time, and I think the timing was good. We were looking for a new conference to be a participant in, and that conference is the Dune Land. Well, one of the hooks they threw out is, we will consider you coming over to the Dune Land if, in fact, you incorporated a gymnastics team. Well, as it come to play, we now have girls gymnastics at Lake Central. And obviously, as a startup program, they've had their ups and downs, so they've been down for a number of years. I just want to recognize, as Dr. Malkow did, that our gymnastics team in the regional this year placed second behind Chesterton, which I think is quite an accomplishment. The girls are coming along, they're doing a nice job. We may not take first and seconds in all the individual events, but incorporating all their scores, we're coming, so I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Seuss?
I, too, was going to, you know, wish luck to the dance team as well as the gymnastics, and I believe some jazz band went to Portage because they saw Dr. Varco driving the truck. What are you doing? You are.
Gold, we didn't get distinction, but we got gold, so.
We got gold, so, yeah. And I know that the other middle schools were probably there, too, right?
Yeah, I don't know how they did.
Yeah, so I apologize.
I was focused on my role.
Choir, right. Choir took gold at Clark, too. I did follow that, but.
At the Jazz?
At the Choir, were they at the same school as you?
I think they might have at Friday night.
Were they Friday? Okay. And then, you know, just a little update, the girls of the grade Clark girls, they did win the tourney, so.
Oh, did they?